All right, good evening, everyone, and welcome to our regular scheduled meeting. We're gonna have a silent prayer of invocation this evening, as well as the be followed by the pledge of allegiance. So if you would, please stand with me. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amen.
Madam Clerk, since we don't have, we're not doing it by Zoom anymore, there's no need for, for a roll call. That is, yes, ma'am.
Good evening and welcome to July 20th, 2021, regular business meeting of the Board of Commissioners. Our first order of business is adoption of the agenda. Do any members of the Board want to offer any amendments?
Yes, ma'am, I would like to remove Resolution 2021-160, authorize Clayton County to abandon 31,590 square feet of right-of-way portion of Conley Circle. We need to revise the illegal description of the property and probably re-advertise it. Is there a second? Well, I'm also gonna move it to August 17th.
Which one was that, Chairman?
Which one?
Excuse me? It's the very last resolution, number 31 on the agenda, 2021-160.
You want to move it to August?
August 17th, meeting. All right, that's the motions, there a second?
Second.
Probably moving to second, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, issue unanimous. Are there any others?
Yes, I would like to move number 17, which is Resolution 2021-161, to the regular agenda.
All right, the motion is to place Resolution 2021-161, modifying the requirement for face masks or face coverings in unincorporated Clayton County, to be moved to the regular agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Probably moving to second, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any others? If passed, those opposed, none. Any others? All right, here are no others. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
Some, some moved?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hamrick, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, issue unanimous.
Our next item of business, public comment. The Board will hear public comments. Citizens will be given three minutes maximum time limit to speak before the Board of Commissioners. Please state your name and county of residency for the record. Speak clearly into the microphone, and speakers must be courteous, respectful, and not make any disparaging remarks or use abusive language when addressing the Board.
All right, looks like Rodney Fred, Fred Creek, or Creek. I'm sorry, sir. I apologize. Please come forward.
Good afternoon, Board members. My name is Erica Cheek, and we reside in the city of Hampton, city limits of Lovejoy, all right? And so, we are here to talk about our new product for the county to protect our citizens even more. This is Skin Tech, this is an antiseptic foam. It is not alcohol-based. This is to protect the employees of Clayton County while they're working, all right? This is for our first responders, our police officers. This antiseptic foam creates a invisible glove. So it takes off the line item for hand sanitizers and gloves, right? And so, our product comes in a 50 milliliter bottle, as well as a 30-day supply small and a 90-day supply for our large bottles. So we wanted to introduce this to the county.
This product also is a medical-grade antiseptic foam. One of the great things about it is good for families, like yourselves, who have family. We are the proud grandparents of 13 grandchildren, and none of our grands are able to take alcohol-based hand sanitizers with them to school for that particular purpose. So what we do is, one pump of this will last and cover them for a four-hour period. And within that four-hour period, they're able to fight off any germs, bacteria, spoils, or any contact that they come into that could cause harm to them. An eight-hour day for them will be two pumps of this foam. It will cover them for their whole school period. It's a great thing to have, it's good for families. It also has a lot of other effects to it, to where, number one, doesn't have any alcohol in it. It's definitely safe for kids, and there are other health benefits. So we don't make any medical claims, but there are other health benefits and testimonials that we have that come with this product. As far as those who deal with diabetes, it'll help with those particular items as well, too. So again, we just want to bring this to the, bring it to the county and make you aware of what we have out there that's gonna be a benefit for, not only but the county employees, but for your families as well. And the citizens of Clayton County.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Cars on the literature you want to leave?
Yes, we do.
Do you have it with you right here?
Yes.
Just leave it with Mr. Reed right there.
Okay, great, thank you so much.
Atanya Jane Funny.
Good evening, Atanya Jane Funny, unincorporated Clayton. Thank you for this opportunity to speak today. The Clayton County Federation of Democratic Women would like to invite the community, especially the residents of District 1, to hear from several candidates running for District 1 Commissioner. As we know, Commissioner Gregory left big shoes to fill, and we want the residents to go to the polls as informed as possible. It will be moderated by Kathy Adams, who is the National Federation of Democratic Women Southern Region Director. So the forum will take place this Saturday, July 24th, at 11:00 a.m. at Tabernacle of Praise Church in Jonesboro. That is located at 2450 Mount Zion Parkway. The event is in person, but we will be following all the COVID guidelines, and it will also stream on Facebook. So we're inviting all citizens to come out and meet some of the candidates that's running for Commissioner. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Brenda Harrison.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Brenda Harrison, unincorporated Clayton County. Needless to say, I've demonstrated a strong commitment to this county. I think I've worked harder for free than I did on my good government job. So, thank you, Clayton County. What I want to do is do a little previous agenda housekeeping. I see we have zoning here this evening. What I'd like to do, we say a lot about, are you gonna hire Clayton County residents? Let's grab that. Let's say, what qualifications do our county residents need to have to qualify for your jobs? And we need to put training in place. The library got a skills training course that's free. The school system has it, and we need to reach out for it and get our people trained. Now, a couple of loose ends. One is the code of conduct. We need to go ahead and finalize that. Either we're gonna have it or not have it for the Commissioners. And if I heard correct, then please feel free to correct me if I'm wrong. That was never a vote to have it or not have it. So it may need to come back on the agenda and finalize, one way or the other. The next thing is MARTA. The MARTA Advisory Board, if I'm correct, there was one appointment, I think Ms. Hamrick had one more appointment, but she had a concern about what the Board would be doing and needed an explanation. So we need that Board to come together, be filled, and go into action. Now, I'm currently on the MARTA Advisory Council, representing Clayton County, and MARTA's doing a lot of things for Metropolitan Atlanta, but not very much down here on the South Side other than come and give their quarterly reports talking about what they're going to do. One major thing is the maintenance facility. They don't even own that property. They're still trying to negotiate a purchase, but they keep saying it's coming to Clayton County, and they're gonna do it. Okay, but we need some accountability for MARTA. One of my things was getting MARTA to have a route that goes down 138 up into the International Park and continue down to 75. They got tired of hearing me, it's proposed. Mr. Parker brought it up in the last presentation, said it's gonna happen, but I know I'm gonna have to stay on their heels to make sure that it does take place. But do know that MARTA is very active all over the metro area, and we can't be left out.
Yes, your time's up.
So, yeah. So thank you so much for listening.
Miki Garber.
Madam Clerk, Miki Garber, unincorporated, Rex, Georgia. Members of the Board and fellow citizens, I want to relay a story today about leadership and cleanliness. This story was conveyed to me by one Miss Regina De Loach. The story happened at one of our parks in our county. She was watching a ballgame. When the game was over and the youths were leaving, the coach halted all the youths and reminded them that the ball field was their home and his home, and had them pick up all their litter and leave the area clean. I wish I had the name of this coach. We need more leaders like this in our county to clean up our litter and debris. And it can be done, but it's gonna take all of us working together. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Kevin Barahona.
Kevin Barahona, Morrow, Georgia. Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners, and everyone. For those who don't know, I'm the founder of Teens for Justice, a nonprofit in Clayton County. I'm here behalf, on behalf of Teens for Justice and Victory in Christ Ministries to formally thank Commissioner Hamrick and for helping us set up our drive-through pop-up vaccination site in Riverdale, which will be taking place this Thursday, July 22nd, from 2:30 to 5:00 p.m. I strongly believe that it is imperative that everyone gets vaccinated, including my generation, as we're about to go back into school. With that being said, I would also like to invite the community out to our vaccination site, which will be, which will take place, 635 Denham Street, Riverdale, Georgia. I would also like to invite everybody to our back-to-school drive, which will be held on Thursday, July 29th, starting at 2:30 p.m. We will be providing free school supplies, free haircuts, and free uniforms for all scholars who come. That will also take place at Victory in Christ Ministries. And our last event is on August 7th, starting at 8:00 a.m. We're having a trash pickup day on Cartless Road, which is in Riverdale, Georgia. With that being said, I believe that's everything I have to say today. So thank you for your time.
Let me say thank you and your organization for all that y'all are doing. And please, continue to spread that message about the vaccinations, especially amongst your age group. But thank you so much.
Kevin, I would just like to publicly say, thank you for being a responsible person, not teen, but responsible young person. You could be out doing a whole lot of things right now, but what you are doing is benefiting your community, and I just want to publicly say thank you.
Cynthia Pryor.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Chairman. Gail. I'm here today to talk about setting up a meeting with you.
State your name and your residence.
Cynthia Pryor, Riverdale, Georgia, Clayton County resident. I went through the chain of commands about an incident at Frank Bailey, and I need to set up an appointment to talk to you. Secondly, I want to see if we could set up, okay, my son just passed, and it's a lot of residents, seniors, who have children that don't realize that if their children have children, the mothers don't have any rights to the child, to the child that they lost. It goes to the next of kin, which is the grandchildren. So I need to know if we could set up something to inform our seniors and other residents of the importance of having a living will. You understand? Because unbeknown to me, my son died, I had no rights. He's still in the morgue right now, and it's been two weeks. He died July 4th. Okay, three. We need more men in management in our senior centers because the men that I'm around, because I shoot pool, they have nobody to talk to. Everybody's women, it's all women. So myself and my partner, Mr. Eel, are recruiters. So if we could go around and get some, because what I've heard is that no men apply for the positions. It's a lot of men out here that want to come and, you know, because who are the guys gonna talk to? They ain't gonna go talk to us.
Y'all shouldn't be beating them in pool like you do.
I do begin to.
I know you do.
You heard about me?
I see you in there, yeah.
They scared. Okay, number three. Number four, this is, I'm just throwing it out there. We have a nonprofit, I want to know, do y'all have any buildings that y'all could give us for our nonprofit, like pro bono or something?
I can tell you right now, we don't. We don't even have enough space for our own folks.
Okay, okay, okay.
We're working on it.
But thank you for.
Yeah, please, just call my office, and we'll sit down and talk.
Make an appointment.
Yes, ma'am. We'll get together. All right. Katib, who? Katib Eel, or E. I apologize now, and I know I messed it up, I apologize. Okay.
I think it's Katib Eel. L is close enough. That's one of the things I like to talk about. I'm the Vice President of Advisory Board at Frank Bailey. They don't know how to say my name yet. I feel like Cassius Clay with Sonny Liston. We have had a president named Barack Hussein Obama. We have a Vice President named Kamala. Please try to say my name. I'm here talking about the safety concerns at Frank Bailey. I'm not gonna take up the time here. I'd like to set up a meeting with you. I want to discuss dirty laundry. And just coming in here, I seen something, and I know everybody else seen it. There's a tripping thing. When you walk in down those steps, that lip is raised. If I'd have seen everybody that walked down those steps and seen that lip raised coming down here, I hope the county can do something about that. Thank you.
Well, we'll have somebody take a look at it. Thank you. Elmenar Lord. Excuse me?
Can I stay right here?
No, we can't hear you, ma'am. Yes, please. So we need to have you on the recording as well as on the mic, so we can hear you. Thank you, Mr. Garber. Gentleman and Squire.
Excuse me.
Rap stars walk like this. I'll wait here for you to come back.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Elmenar Lord, and I'm a resident of Clayton County. It is going two years now. I have a neighbor who is living beside me, and I own my property. And it is going two years now. There's a neighbor there who is harassing me, taunting me every day, every night. He shines light in my, in my bedroom. I have it on the camera. I went upstairs to sleep, every night he do it. And I would call the police, and they don't do nothing. And this is taunting me. I can't even go into my kitchen to make my breakfast. He's there, putting light and throwing down heavy stuff, even today. And I have it too, on camera, everything that he does, and I have it in writing. And when I call the police, 911, they don't do nothing. So I have to get a lawyer. So right now, the lawyer, he's dealing with it. But it is going on every day, every night, every day. I went upstairs to sleep, and every night, there's a light in my bedroom. In the back room, I have company, and every night, there's light there also. So I don't know what to say. I cried and I prayed. I went to church, light of joy. Pastor Salters, honey, prayed with me. He let the prayer team pray with me. And this is still going on. This is still going on over two years. And I'm a homeowner for 16 years, and that man is renting at 244 Shenandoah Drive, and I live at 242 Shenandoah Drive. I don't know what to do again, because I need help. And there is no help. I called Mr. Damon Davis. I called his office, I don't get no response. So I don't know what to do again. I don't know what to do.
We're gonna direct you. He comes, he's inching up here, because he knows that we're gonna direct you to him, and he definitely will find a way to help you in some form or fashion. So please, get with the police. This is Police Chief Kevin Roberts.
Yes, and I have to say, I work with Clayton County Public School as a part-time teacher, too.
What do our best help you find a solution, ma'am?
Because of what I'm going through.
Yes, ma'am. Herm, there's names over here today, boy. Herm, Hermonia Haney, or Honey.
Isn't it Hermia Howell?
Yes, it's Howell. The two L's converge together, so yes. No, okay, thank you, ma'am. Vanessa Battle. Madam Clerk, how are we on time? Okay, yes, ma'am.
Good evening to my Commissioners, also you, Jeff Turner. I'm in unincorporated Clayton County, Ellenwood, and I really wanted to kind of talk about the cannabis warehouse that I understand is being built in my backyard. So what I wanted to do as well, because my Commissioner and mentor, her beloved, has passed away. So I needed to have a meeting with you, so that I can get all of the logistics, because I have been away at law school, so I'm not versed on everything that's going on. So I need to get some logistics as to what is happening, because many of my neighbors who are elderly have reached out to me, and that's why I came out today. Because as you all know, I'm very active in Clayton. I fly in and fly out, but when I'm here, I'm very active. So I need to be able to talk to my community and let them know what's going on.
Not a problem. We can set up a meeting. There has been no decision made on it as of yet, as a matter of fact. Well, we'll deal with it tonight, but there's been no decision on it. But call my office, and we'll set up an appointment to talk.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yvette Garner. Okay, thank you. Allison Howard.
Good afternoon, esteemed members of the Board. I am a 21-year resident of unincorporated Clayton County in Ellenwood. One of the main factors for me choosing the location where I reside was because it was a rather rural area, still farmland, just quiet and peaceful, and I could raise my son in a good environment. Since I've been there, I've noticed the area now has changed quite a lot with a lot of fast food restaurants, and we got the Super Walmart. Now they're wanting to build a cannabis warehouse. We don't need fast food restaurants. We don't need cannabis facilities. We need what we have to be maintained. From where I live, which is in Northridge Station, to Anvil Block Road, you can't walk down the street. It's so overgrown. Get to the red light at Anvil Block Road and turn right, and you think you're in another country. Our subdivision, I guess because it's on the border of the outskirts, because the Clayton-Henry Line actually runs through my backyard. And it's just the common areas, the easements, well, I shouldn't say common areas, but the areas that are owned by builders that weren't developed, it's just horrible. It's just, we're overrun by coyotes, just all kinds of snakes. I mean, I had, there was a video last year circulating of a copperhead going across a ring doorbell. That was my doorbell. It was about a 10-foot copperhead. I'm afraid to come out of my house early in the morning, late at night, because we're just overrun. So I would like to see some of the funds that we pay in taxes be directed toward our community. I'm a 38-year retiree with the federal government at the Centers for Disease Control, so I'm well aware of government bureaucracy. But I do know there's a way to work through that, and I would appreciate if my Commissioners would work to do that on behalf of our communities. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, that concludes the public comment.
Next, the Board will vote on the consent agenda.
All right, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Probably moving to second, are there any questions on any other items? Here are none, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, issue unanimous.
First item is Resolution 2021-161 regarding face masks or face covers.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Vice Chair, and Commissioner. Resolution 2021-161 is a resolution modifying the requirement for face masks or face coverings in unincorporated Clayton County. It authorizes the county to otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution. To authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expenses may be required to provide an effective date of this resolution or for other purposes.
All right, is there a motion? I'll make the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Are there any questions?
Well, there's, I don't have a question, but I do have a comment regarding this. I would like for the Board to hold off on this. I would like for the board to hold off on this. The numbers are rising. As a matter of fact, the school system, I believe, has a mandate for the kids to go back to school in two weeks for mask. And we have a lot of employees who have kids in our schools. And we're without mask and taking it home to the kids or whatever. And I just want us to reconsider that and put it off a little bit longer, even if it's thirty days or sixty days or whatever. I would like for us to consider that.
My only opposition to that would be, and I do understand where you're coming from, but those who are fully vaccinated, and we have heard from the CDC how protected you are if you are fully vaccinated, to be able to still operate, or not operate, but go in and out of facilities and buildings. But this is also optional because you can still be fully vaccinated and still opt out to continue to wear your mask. But I will also take this opportunity to encourage everyone to continue to get vaccinated. We are one of those counties who are lagging in terms of vaccinations. And we can do better in terms of making sure that people receive them. And this may add even more of an incentive, especially to maybe even some of the employees, to get vaccinated. So they have an option and it just gives them an option. Because you have to be one hundred percent vaccinated, not just one shot unless it's one of the, what is it, Johnson to Johnson vaccination. But it still protects our employees and the citizens under this new recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You really helped my cause. Like you say, we're the lowest, you know, county and all as far as vaccination and all. And our employees, you know, if you, you approaching or someone's approaching us with their business, I don't think people are going to ask them, have you been vaccinated? How will we know? And I just think for a while, we need to just hold off until these numbers start going down and all in this Delta variant and all get under control just a little bit. And then go back to maybe considering this as far as the no mask. But I think we really need to keep this in place.
And nothing keeps us from coming back and reinstating the mask policy.
After folk get sick. I mean, how many people will have to get sick or take leave from work or whatever? I just wish we would reconsider.
Well, also too, there have been cases where folks that are vaccinated have gotten COVID a second time. There's been cases where folks that have gotten COVID have died. I think considering this is a public, we're talking about public facilities. We need to put in place protocols that are going to protect all folk at any extent. And I think with what Commissioner Hamburg is saying, I would prefer to err on the side of caution rather than putting folks out there. Considering that they're even stating that they're unsure. Well, let me not use the word unsure. They're not a hundred percent sure that the vaccine is going to negate the Delta variant. So with the unsurety, I would have to say that we need to keep our folks masked within public facilities.
Okay, the only other thing I might add is we do have protocols in place to help ensure that as well, or help protect the citizens and the employees. But unless there's anything else, we can go ahead and take the vote. All right, those in favor, aye? Those opposed?
May.
Three, two, one, it fails. So let's go to the next.
Mr. Chairman, the next item is a board appointment.
All right. All right, next appointment is for a board appointment to the code enforcement board. This is at large. Ms. Maddie Welch's term expired on July sixteen, twenty twenty-one. New term will begin immediately and will expire July sixteen, twenty twenty-four. Any recommendations? All right, I'm going to recommend Ms. Tasha Pace. Is there a second?
Second.
Probably moved and second. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Issue unanimous.
The next item on zoning items, and citizens may speak for or against an item that is considered by law to be a zoning decision. Each side will have ten minutes to present its case. In the event there is more than one speaker per side, speakers must divide their time in order to complete their full presentation within the ten-minute time allotment. When the time runs out, speakers are expected to immediately cease speaking. Applicants or citizens speaking in favor of an item shall speak first. Applicants in zoning ordinance cases shall have the right to reserve time for rebuttal. Opponents of a zoning decision item shall have no right of rebuttal. When speaking, speak directly into the microphone and begin by stating your name, address, or name of an organization you represent. Abusive, profane, or derogatory language will not be permitted. Clapping, yelling will not be permitted, but show of hands or standing silently will be permitted to show support. First item is B O C twenty-one oh two dash zero zero nine zero. It's a P U D to rezone G B to P U D for forty-six single-family lots. This one is a decision only a public hearing was held before.
That, that's all I, my name is David Harris.
Hold on a second, sir. Okay, hold on just a second for me.
Yes, I'll sound the details into the record. That's okay. The case number, B O C two one zero two dash zero zero nine zero. The applicant, applicant Clayton Tara LLC is requesting to rezone fifteen point five two plus or minus acres of land located at fourteen twenty-five Tara Road and at ten four one five Panhandle Road, Hampton, Georgia. The parcel ID numbers are shown on your agenda. The request is to rezone from General Business District to P U D Plan Unit Development for the subdivision of a forty-six lot, single-family detached subdivision known as the Panhandle Village. Staff recommendations, approval within conditions and ZAG recommendations, also approval with conditions. The conditions will read as follow. The development shall be no more than forty-six single-family residential lots consistent with the approved preliminary plat dated one fourth, twenty twenty, and shall incorporate a percentage of, of units on the main, of master bedrooms on the main. All, number two, all homes must have front facade constructed with forty percent brickstone or hard coat stucco or a combination thereof with remaining facade consisting of hardy plank and other accent materials reflective of the Panhandle overlay specifications for architectural appearances for residential homes. Vinyls shall only be permitted to be used in the eaves and soffits. Condition number three, a plan book shall be submitted prior to final plan application to the Community Development Department that shall include, but not limited to, building elevations, design criteria applicable for entries, porches, doors, windows, dormers, colons, corners, rakes, garages, roofs, landscaping, fencing, retaining walls, and exterior colors and materials. Condition number four, a homeowners association shall be established for the proposed development for the purpose of providing sustainable maintenance of common areas and covenants regulating sustainable uses and structures. Condition number five, provide one access street from Panhandle Road aligned with Bonanza Church Road and other right-of-way and streetlight improvements as required by the Clayton County Transportation and Development Department. Number six, residential lots should have the following minimum setback standards. Front thirty feet, side ten feet, with a total of twenty feet on each side between dwellings, and a rear setback of twenty-five feet. All corner lots should have a thirty-foot yard setback on both frontages. All homes are to have a minimum of two-car garages. Condition number eight, provide twenty-five-foot vegetative buffer with a minimum six-foot height fence located internal to the proposed buffers adjacent to single-family zone properties. Condition number nine, at least one hundred percent of the total twenty percent required open space shall be accessible by public street or street right-of-way and shall be usable active recreational space to include picnic areas with tables, a pavilion area, and community garden area, not less than one acre in area. The tennis court was struck from this condition. Condition number ten, provide decorative fencing and appropriate planting year-round to screen the rear yards for all adjacent, for all lots adjacent to the Panhandle Road and Tara Road. These conditions are staff recommended and ZAG recommended considering this is a planned unit development. The conditions shape the standards for this particular property.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but Commissioner Franklin, we had talked about these conditions when we had the public hearing last time, and she was in agreeance with that.
We, yeah, there was considerable discussion over these conditions. There, there's some add-ons based on that conversation that related to the masters on the main and the striking of the tennis courts from the recreational area and the improvements, making sure that we had adequate streetlight improvements to be incorporated.
Gotcha. Yes, sir.
All right, I'm David Harris. I represent the applicant. We did have the public hearing in, in May. I, I regret that Commissioner Franklin's not here tonight. I hope everything is well with her. But we are pretty much in agreement with all the conditions. But the, one of the things, the tennis court was, was, she was okay with the tennis court being removed. And then she was also okay with the community guarding, garden area size being determined by the HOA. But what, the, what we got hung up on was the side setback requirement. And I had sent her an email the day after the hearing. There was some confusion as to what the fire department required. And I have the ordinance here, but the fire department is okay with fifteen feet between houses. There was, as I say, there was some confusion in the, as to what the ordinance required. But we really, really need a seven-and-a-half-foot sideline with fifteen feet separation between homes versus the ten and the twenty. And that, that is, there's a lot of that throughout the county and we really need that. This builder needs that to make his product work on this, on this deal. And, and I'm not, what I heard her say about number one is not consistent with what I'm seeing on my report. I, the, the master on main, I don't see anything about that in these conditions. So we, we did agree that we would make an effort to have master on main. Commissioner Franklin wanted that. And, you know, if, if we have the seven-and-a-half-foot side setback, I think we can commit that we'll have seventy-five percent of the homes will have masters on main. But without that, I, I can't commit to that.
Well, she seemed to be pretty adamant about that setback space between the homes. And she's not here to get, give us her, her input on that. So would you be opposed to tabling this until the next zoning?
I think rather than making a mistake yesterday, that'd probably be the best thing to do. Do we know she'll be here next month?
Can't speak for the commissioner.
I understand. Yeah, I mean, we're so close to getting this worked out that I really think we need her input. And I had sent her an email Monday week ago and asked if we could talk or meet. And, you know, like I say, I hope she's well because I did not hear back. And nowhere did I hear from her assistant. So I'm kind of at a loss as to what they're thinking because we can't talk, so.
Okay, well, I encourage you to continue to, to reach her and get that additional input before we meet again. And Ms. Ban, if, I believe the next meeting is August seventeenth.
That's correct.
So I will offer that up in a motion to table this until August seventeenth. Is there a second?
Second.
Probably moved and second. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Issue unanimous. Thank you both.
The next item is the companion item, L S twenty-one oh two dash zero zero twenty-two preliminary plat approval of the forty-six single-family lots.
I'll sound into the record. The applicant Clayton Tara LLC is requesting a preliminary plat.
Yes, here, sir.
For the Panhandle Village, approved for fifteen point five two plus or minus acres of land located at fourteen twenty-five Tara Road and ten four one five Panhandle Road, Hampton, Georgia. Parcel ID numbers identified on the agenda. The request is for the subdivision of forty-six single-family detached lots. Property is being zoned from General Business to P U D to allow the preliminary plat. Staff recommendations for approval conditional, ZAG recommendations for approval conditional. The conditions are identical to the conditions sounded on the prior case.
Okay, it wouldn't be my recommendation, sir, to hold off on public hearing until we have that next meeting. So if you're in agreeance with that, I'll make a motion to table this also until August seventeenth. Is there a second?
Second.
Probably moved and second. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Can you tell me who made the second?
Commissioner Hamburg. Issue unanimous. Thank you, sir.
The next item is item number twenty-one, B O C twenty-one oh three dash zero one zero one. It's a P U D rezone R M to P U D for eighteen attached townhomes.
Case number, B O C two one zero, two one zero three, zero one zero one. The applicant Greg Stringer, on behalf of G B S Clayton LLC, is requesting to rezone two point three three plus or minus acres of land located at sixteen twenty Norman Drive in Atlanta, Georgia, address. The request is to rezone R M, rezone the property from R M multifamily residential to P U D Plan Unit Development for eighteen single-family residential attached townhomes. Property is located east of the Norman Drive and West Fayetteville Road intersection. Parcel ID numbers identified on your agenda. Staff recommendations is for approval with ten conditions. The zoning advisory group recommendation was for denial. The, the conditions as recommended by staff. The conditions read as, the maximum number of lots shall be eighteen. The required open space and site layout shall reflect the submitted plans dated six twenty-five, twenty twenty-one. And they were received by the, the Community Development Department via email dated seven, seven, twenty twenty-one. The, the plans shall be, shall be consistent with those plans submitted in addition to being consistent with the building elevations also received by the planning department, which is referenced in the later condition. Condition number two, the applicant must comply with the floodplain and stormwater management per the requirements of the Clayton Water Authority prior to approval of the L G P site development application. Number three, all homes must have front facade constructed with forty percent brickstone or hard coat stucco or a combination thereof with remaining facade consisting of hardy plank and other accent materials. Vinyls shall only be permitted to be used on the eaves and soffits. Condition number four, a plan book shall be submitted prior to the final plan application to the Community Development Department that shall include, but not limited to, building elevations, design criteria applicable for entries, porches, doors, windows, dormers, colons, corners, rakes, garages, roofs, landscaping, fencing materials, exterior colors and, and materials. Building facade shall be consistent with the elevations submitted to six, on six twenty-five, twenty twenty-one. Condition number five, a homeowners association shall be established for the proposed development for the purpose of providing sustainable maintenance of common areas and covenants regulating sustainable uses and structures. Condition number six, residential lots should have the minimum setback standards, front twenty feet, side yard zero feet, and rear yard twenty feet. Condition number seven, each townhome shall be a minimum of fourteen hundred square feet heated floor area with a minimum of two-car garages. The, the, with the exception of nine, the units may be built with one-car garage provided the unit contains a master bedroom on the main floor. Condition number eight, access to development shall be via one curb cut from Norman Drive. All street and right-of-way approvals shall be subject to the approval of the Transportation Department. Condition number nine, an attractive landscape area shall be provided at the entrance to the development. Condition number ten, fencing shall be provided along the southern and eastern boundary lines and the locations shown on the submitted site plan. Number eleven, no parking signs shall be located along the internal, internal street frontages. Condition number twelve, the amenities there shall include a top lot and a pavilion with two grills as shown on the submitted site plan. Condition number thirteen, the preliminary plat shall include the following development notes. No developer or builder shall develop or construct a new residential lot in a subdivision for rental or lease purposes by the developer, builder, or entity having a business relationship with the developer or builder. The subdivision plat shall be annotated on the cover sheet stating no rental lease of lots, houses. And this will be inserted on the, on the plat with the developer's name with annotated and shall be one of the conditions on the plat approval. A condition number fourteen being added, this condition states that the, that trash disposal shall be, shall be a agreement by the homeowners association to be a unified pickup service for the entire development. That concludes the conditions recommended by staff.
Are you the applicant?
Yeah, hi, Danny Blumenthal with Battle Law, P C, one West Court Square, Decatur, Georgia. And we are representing the applicant.
Okay, well, before you say anything else, would you like to save any minutes for a rebuttal after the public hearing?
Do I need to give a time now or just if I finish really?
So we can set how long you're going to speak and who the people are favor. Usually it's two or three minutes.
Um, I'll probably need six, six to seven minutes at the, at the beginning, yeah.
At the beginning, so.
So I'll leave four minutes, three minutes?
So put six on the clock. Yes, ma'am.
Do you have the slides? Okay.
Oh, you have a slot?
Yeah, we have a slide, a slideshow.
Stop the clock and reset it.
Sorry. Okay, um, yeah, I guess just the purpose slide, do you have? Yeah. Um, okay. I'm sorry, I'm gonna open this up on my, yeah, on my end. Uh, is that sorry? Okay, so, um, again, I'm Danny Blumenthal with Battle Law. I'm representing, um, the applicant. And we are looking to, um, to rezone the subject property, which is on Norman Drive, to allow for eighteen townhome units. It's four buildings, uh, all, all for sale units. And it is, oh. Yeah, so we're looking to rezone. It's currently zoned RM, and we're looking to rezone the subject property. You can see right there, adjacent to, um, North Clayton High School, um, for an eighteen-unit townhome community. Again, that is a for-sale product, um, and there'll be twenty-eight percent open space. So, yeah, you can see that, that it's quite a diverse area. Oh, well. It, it's straight across from the high school, thank you. Um, there's some general business. There is other, um, another planned unive- unit development just to the west that has some townhomes. And then the RS one-ten, uh, north of that, just adjacent to the high school, uh, has single-family detached, um, just to show you the area. And so just to look at the, the site plan, again, as I said, it's four, it's four buildings, um, but it'll be eighteen town, uh, townhomes, um, on the south side along the edge of the property as well as on the east side up into where that detention pond is. It'll be fenced, a privacy fence, um, which was mentioned as, um, as a concern earlier, so it was just something that we wanted to address. Um, and then in addition, on the, uh, the southern part of the property, you can see that there's, um, as previously mentioned, there's a tot lot with some swings and a slide, uh, there's a pavilion that has grills, uh, open space over there, a little over a quarter acre, as well as the maukiosk that has two additional parking spaces there. Um, and then for some elevations, just to show you what this project is going to look like, a craftsman-style home. And, um, it'll be a mixture of one and two car garages. The, uh, two-car garages will be for any of the, uh, I guess, the, the more typical, uh, master on the second level, uh, units. And then if there's master on main, um, that would make it so it would be a one-car garage. But that would be based on market demand. Um, that would be up to nine units, um, as stated in the conditions. And then just some, um, frequently asked questions here, the proposed building materials. As I stated, it'd be a craftsman-style building with a mixture of, uh, brick and other cementatious materials like board and battens, shake, uh, things of that nature, you know, a higher quality, uh, product. Uh, the units will be a minimum of fourteen hundred, uh, square feet for heated floor area. Uh, there'll be a mixture of two and three bedrooms. Uh, there will be, uh, two-car garages, again, but one car just for the master on the main. And that will be capped at nine units, uh, maximum. The amenities include interior sidewalks, a pavilion, maukiosk, uh, and the, the grills and the, uh, the tot lot with, with the slides and swings. It will not be a gated community and the anticipated list price will be starting at a hundred ninety thousand dollars, which will allow it to be, you know, somewhat affordable, but also really allow for a high-end product. Uh, and then lastly, if the prod- project is approved, uh, it'll take, uh, six months, just about, to get the infrastructure installed, and then another four months after that, uh, the first units will be available. So that was it, and I would like to, yeah.
Okay.
See if you have any. Oh, oh, sorry, actually, could we go to the conditions? I just wanted to address what changes that we made. I know this was red, but, um, we just changed the, the date. It was the updated site plan for that one, so that's, um, pretty obvious there what that is. And then, um, I guess for the, for number seven, um, we added that, uh, it was a two-car garage except for up to nine units, may be built with a one-car garage, uh, provided the unit contains a master on the main. And again, that is capped at nine, um, so that wouldn't be all of the units. And then these were just based on concerns that were, uh, brought up earlier. They'll be fencing along the southern and eastern boundary lines, as I showed on the site plan. No parking signs. Uh, will be located on the interior streets. And the amenity areas, as I mentioned again, will include a tot lot, pavilion, grills. Um, and that was what was shown on the southern part of the site plan. So that, that's my conclusion.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. And as we are winding down on the time for anybody to speak in favor of this applicant's request, is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of? All right, is there anybody who would like to speak in opposition to? Come forward, ma'am.
First of all, my name is Clean Wright. I'm a homeowner.
Could you speak up just a little bit, ma'am?
My name is Clean Wright. I'm a homeowner at Park Place South after years since nineteen ninety-two. And, um, the, the neighborhood is still nice as it used to be, even though a lot of people there have decided to rent their homes out. And that's the reason a lot of people are not here, because they don't, they don't even know this is going on or whatnot. But nevertheless, even though she made a nice proposal and everything, it's still the same. It's only, uh, two acres or less. And you're talking about eighteen homes, and also the fact that that's the only green space we have. Uh, they, I mean, the green space went from, uh, behind us to now it's, we're encircled it. Basically, uh, the airport's less than a half a mile from us, and we are always inundated with the, with the airplanes, especially if the weather's different or what have you. And also behind us, they already built on top of us. And I ask that you deny this request without going any further as far as, uh, uh, them trying to do this. That, that's our only green space we have. And, and also there, there are no, um, how you say commodities as far as, we only have a way fields and, um, a Circle K. And there's a quick trip at the end. So to, to bring a hundred and seventy thousand dollar home in there, that's not, they, they, they abide and the next thing they turn it into Section Eights or whatnot, 'cause that's what they did behind us. They, they, um, when they were building the houses, and I'll never forget, I didn't know about it, the sign was on West Fayetteville Road. And I went around there, uh, this is right after they built the, uh, the way field. And the gentleman did say to me, he says, "Well, why didn't you come and try to stop it?" I said, "I didn't know what was going on." He said, "We building all on top of you all." It was almost insult just there. It, it was on the other side of me. I don't live on that side. I live on the side where they're talking about. But it was still the fact that building on top of us and, and congestion is a thing. And at one time, we didn't have a whole lot of, um, sirens going by. But since they made Section Eights out of the ones that they built, that they said were gonna be nice homes with the pool that they never did put in, the, the wreck area that they never did put in, and this is a much larger space, uh, right down on West Fayetteville Road. And, and the fact that she said that it, within two acres, you're gonna have a area to play, there's no, there's no way. That's just little crease, uh, uh, a sidewalk, a, a grilling area. And that's just something that's on paper. They don't mean that. They, she didn't mean that. She, they just bought a nice space in here today. It's still the same.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else like to speak in opposition? Come forward, ma'am. The lady in the back, please.
My voice is always cracking. But, um, this is just about four sentences that I've put together.
State your name, please.
It's Sandra Williams, and I live at, uh, in the same complex as the person that was just here in, uh, Park Place South. On Norman Drive. Uh, Norman Drive is less than two miles long. It is a thoroughway between Highway three-fourteen and Riverdale Road. It is very di- busy during rush hour. There's North Clayton High School on Norman Drive. Stone Crest Apartments, Park Place South where I live. A strip mall on, uh, Highway three-fourteen that borders the Park Place South condominium that is on Norman Drive. Also on Norman Drive, there's a water tower next to the high school, a strip mall, and a checkers on the corner of Norman Drive and Riverdale Road. There's also on Norman Drive, a church, an auto shop. And it's next to Stone Crest Apartments, which is a large apartment complex of about, I don't know, a hundred or more apartments. They're all one level, okay? And the, uh, Park Place South apartments are one level and two. There are ninety-eight units there. But, um, these are all, and then there's, um, the, um, elementary school and a middle school on, um, the corner, on three-fourteen and Norman Drive. So we got all of this right there in two miles from Norman Drive. I don't think it's really two miles. And so there's, there's some property, two acres, that want to come in and put eighteen units of two-story buildings with garages. So we got, um, some traffic down. Un, 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 unimaginable traffic in that little two-mile area. That's not, uh, uh, in my opinion, it really doesn't have to be that busy. It's already busy enough. Uh, I thank you for listening.
Thank you, ma'am. Come forward.
That's Hanya Jean Sunny, unincorporated Clayton. I'm really not here to speak for or against this particular subdivision, although I do know this area well, because I was a teacher at North Clayton High School. So what they're saying is correct about the traffic and the safety for the kids going back and forth on that little stretch of road. But I'm here to speak about our, um, the, the developers that come in and ask you all for permission to build, and they don't follow through.
Ma'am, we only listening to those in opposition to the applicant's request.
Okay, well, then I'm in opposition. Um, so, um, so, um, my, my thing is, as you know, Chairman Turner, 'cause we've been talking for a few days, they come in and they say this is gonna be a HOA community. Now, a lot of the residents in Clayton County know, because we have to go through that, the time and effort that we have to spend to work with between the developers, community development, um, the builder, whoever the builder is, about these HOAs, the covenants, the people buy the houses not knowing what the covenant says. The builders do not follow through with their plans, and it's a whole big mess. And you all know that when you say this is gonna be a HOA community, all the things that come with that. And then when we, when we complain about it, it becomes a civil matter. So that, on top of all the things that they're asking for, I would say that, um, this needs to be rethought. And I think when it comes to HOA, Clayton County as a whole needs to look at what we have in place. Because as residents of Clayton County, we feel like we are being put out there to be, fed to the wolves after we buy our units because of all the things that go away with HOA. Thank you.
All right, the clock had actually, uh, reset, but we are out of time as far as opposition at this time. Ma'am, if you can come forward for your rebuttal, you have four, four minutes.
Thank you. Um, I, I don't see that this, I mean, the owner, excuse me, of this property does have the right to develop something. Um, I think that eighteen units is, is relatively small. It's nothing crazy here. And that being said, it should be fairly walkable. Everyone was talking about all the different things that are, that are local, um, different, you know, restaurants or the school or things like that. So that will have something to do, uh, with the traffic. But, but also, I don't, regarding the comment about this becoming Section Eight housing, um, this is a, a high-end townhome unit for sale. Again, I, it is not the intent of, of the developer to have anything like that happen. Again, this might be a high-end, um, property, and I don't foresee anything like that happening in this, uh, in this area with all of that's going on, uh, with the development, uh, in, in this area. Uh, that would, uh, be my, my response to that.
Excuse me. Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Hamper?
Uh, yes.
Uh, there was mentioned something about, uh, a lot of traffic on Norman Drive. I don't know if you are, uh, well, what's the young lady's name that mentioned that? Yeah, Norman Drive has been widened. Yeah, it's, it's wider than what it was, and I don't know what the intent there was, but that does help with the traffic and all. The question I have, uh, for staff regarding about the no selling or renting, now, I have a concern about that. What's to keep that from happening?
Okay, the, uh, the county just recently passed an ordinance to address this, and this requirement now will, will be posting said language on each preliminary plat for a single-family development. And it will read as, as it states here on the, uh, screen. And that is, the preliminary plat shall include the following development notes. And it will read, "No developer or builder shall develop or construct a new residential lot or house in a subdivision for rental or lease purposes by the developer, builder, or any entity having a business relationship with the developer or builder." The subdivision plat shall be annotated with this note on the cover sheet, and the builder's name will be placed into, into that annotation in order that we would enforce that as one of the conditions of that plat. So the, it basically states that can, the developer or builder cannot rent out directly.
Who enforces that?
The, that will, it's placed on the plat, so we have the ability to enforce that, because now it's become legally, legally recorded with that plat as, the plat moves forward. So the enforcement is there, but naturally, like any enforcement matter, it'd have to be observed or reported in order for, for us to have active enforcement in place. But we do have the teeth in the code to support us to, to enforce it, once it's been identified as a violation.
The homeowners would have to report it to the county.
Or somebody.
Right, yeah.
Yes.
The HOA would be a good, uh, authorities as they are internal to the development, but anyone can report.
Right, and they like they do.
Fact that they're renting out. And we have the teeth to, to, uh, enforce that.
Okay, and now about the trash and the dumpsters, and how will that work?
The, uh, the, the HOA should create, should agree to a uni- to a, a uniform trash pickup service for the entire community. So there, so they won't have.
Individual, not a one place dumping?
Right, there should be one service providing to all the units there. So therefore, you know, you have continuous, you have service that's gonna be happening on a certain day of the week. So if one person contracted with a different contractor, that would be out of order. So the idea here is that the, the HOA agreed to one service trash pickup for the entire community.
Okay.
And we added that as condition number fourteen.
Okay, and I think this has been covered when, uh, the, the, um, conditions were read. Because my thing is, you know, we are presented with different rend- Because my thing is, you know, we are presented with different renderings, and then when the project is finished, it looks entirely different. But I think from what you were reading and some of the things that have been changed have covered that.
That's correct. We did condition it to the elevation as shown, but we also have in the condition language that would incorporate the certain amount of brick. That's condition number three. The, "All homes must have a front facade constructed with forty percent brickstone or hard-coated stucco, and the remaining facade shall be hardy plank and other accent materials. And no vinyl should be used except for easel sockets." So this gives us some architectural standards to stick with. And the applicant is required to submit a plan book that we'll have to review and approve, making sure that that plan book show home plans that are meeting that particular condition. And we have also added a condition to state that the elevations as submitted, that they also must be compliant with those elevations if we're comfortable with what's presented by the applicant.
Okay, did we mention anything about the parking space behind, yes, behind those garages? The width and all, or the setbacks for that?
No, no, we only addressed the fact that there, that that the units had, that there were service engines, the units had to be two-car garages, but there was no mention of a particular width for.
I think we need to put something in there, so how many cars can park behind the garages? Since we're going to put no parking signs on the street, because we don't want people parking on the street.
I understand that the setback, yes, we do have a minimum front yard setback of twenty feet. The, that twenty-foot clearance from the right-of-way generally provides enough room to double-stack two cars in a driveway. So it doesn't necessarily, it only references setback, which provides enough room in the driveway for that parking.
Okay, and the width of the street itself? I know there is a subdivision, and it was mentioned in one of the comments that were made next to the, I think it's River Station or something? You can barely, two cars can barely pass. Are we going to have something in there that will say the streets will be wider? Or wide enough?
Ma'am, ma'am, please.
This, the roads will be developed to the county standards for public street width. So all, so the standard that we currently use now is basically a fifty-foot right-of-way, which includes a pavement width of twenty-four feet most times. So the current standard for road improvements, they'll have to meet whatever the Public Works Department.
And it's in there?
I mean, the Transportation Department determines as being the minimum width. So it wouldn't be an alley-style street. It would be the same standard width as our traditional public roads are.
Okay, and in the condition we have, okay, you did mention the no parking signs. Okay, trash pickup. Okay, with all of this being said, I will recommend approval for this development.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions?
I do have one.
Commissioner Hamer?
The statement for rental control. So if a management company or group of individuals or just one individual decided to buy multiples of these, is that still considered a relationship with the developer where they cannot rent them?
The, I'll probably defer to legal to speak to this to some extent. The agreement that's presented, that was adopted in the code, pertains primarily to the builder, or anybody having a relationship with the builder. Once individual units are bought, then they become the control of the individual owner. So that language does not necessarily relate to the, to those individuals. We have used, we have used a condition in some earlier townhomes before this amendment was created to the ordinance to limit the, in the realms to a certain percentage of the units so that the owners could not even rent beyond a certain number. That happens sometimes in a lot of condominium-type developments.
So in essence, the developer, the developer cannot rent, or a management, so a company that he's, he or she is associated with, cannot rent a percentage. But me, as a private citizen, can come in, buy these townhomes, and rent as many of them as I want, which would go over the, what is it, twenty percent?
There is no percentage at this time. We have put conditions pertaining to the situation that you're describing. But as it's written right now, you're correct, there is nothing that addresses individual ownership leasing. It's only that the builders cannot build it with the intent to rent.
Let's let Mr. Ray chime in.
And the reason why this board put that language in is not to prevent. It was to weigh the balance between a person who owns their house, and they decide they want to rent it versus someone who's building townhomes specifically for the purpose of renting them. And that the board decided that they did not want to see that as that kind of activity here in the county. So we put something in there to say that if you are a builder or a developer, you cannot build properties specifically to rent them. That doesn't stop somebody from buying a house or houses in any development and turning around and then renting them. If the board was deciding to do that, that would require a different language than what's in here.
Okay, and for me to ask that question, it's, I don't want to put forth a false facade and make our citizens believe that, well, guess what? They cannot be rented. We know one of our goals of the entire board is to increase homeownership, and we want to do that. So that's, that's my purpose of the comment and the question.
Any other questions? All right, here, and those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. I think you, is there a part two of this?
Yes, there is.
The next item is item number twenty-two, which is preliminary plat, twenty-one zero-three dash zero-zero-nineteen. There's a plat approval for the eighteen single-family detached townhomes.
Case number plat two-one-zero-three zero-zero-one-nine. The applicant, Greg Stringer, on behalf of GBS Clayton LLC is requesting approval of a subdivision of land of two-point-three-three acres of land located at sixteen-twenty Norman Drive, Atlanta, Georgia, which is further known as parcel number one-three-zero-nine-zero-B-A-zero-zero-five. The preliminary plat requests for eighteen single-family residential attached townhomes. The property is currently zoned RIM, but it's under pursuit for rezoning to PUD. The property is located at Norman Drive and West Fayetteville Road. Staff recommendation is for approval with modified conditions to make up fourteen conditions. And the zoning advisor group recommendation was for denial.
All right, please state your name again and how many minutes you would like to save in your rebuttal.
Danielle Blumenthal from Battle Law PC, One West Port Square, Decatur, Georgia. I don't think that I need any time. I already made the presentation for this matter.
So you don't want to save any minutes either?
I can save ten minutes.
Well, all righty, ma'am. Okay, thank you, ma'am. Anybody here want to speak in opposition?
Oscar Williams, resident of College Park. I'm thinking that this mile of street here that we were talking about is fully congested already. She said something about the widening of the street, which doesn't have anything to do with the amount of traffic that goes from one end of the other to the other of West Fayetteville to Riverdale Road. You have a church, you have an automotive shop, you have an apartment complex, you have condominium homes there. On the other side of the street, you have a whole subdivision of houses. You have a school. You have all of this on one mile stretch of road, and I think it's going to be too congested with eighteen units being built there. And I'm in opposition to that.
Anybody else like to speak in opposition?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Garber?
Madam Clerk, Nikki Garber, unincorporated Brex, Georgia. My respects to Council Blumenthal. But I would like to remind the board here that you had four academics from Clayton State College to try to get all of us to understand why we are a one-tier county and to move ourselves up. And in order to do that, I think they stress very strongly entrepreneurialism and homeownership, individual homeownership. Now, are we going to listen to our academics and learn from them and move forward? Or are we going to keep doing the same stuff we've been doing and waller in our own theses? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else?
Ms. Blumenthal, you have any comments to add?
Thank you. So to the first gentleman that was asking about the road widening, you're correct, that doesn't, that doesn't increase the number of cars that are taking trips along Norman Drive or any road that's widened, but it increases capacity. So if there are the same number of cars or more, it would be able to handle that more so than it would have been before it was widened. So I'd imagine that was the intent. Because there's the high school and the other homes in the area with the traffic, that would lessen traffic without generating more trips there. And then also about the point with homeownership, I understand that that is something that you all pride yourselves in, and that that's something that's important to Clayton County, and these are for sale units or proposed to be. So I think that this goes along with your mission to increase homeownership in Clayton County.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, I recommend approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other questions? Here and now, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
The next item is item number twenty-three. BOC twenty-one oh-two dash zero-one zero-zero. PUD rezon AG to PUD for sixty-one single-family detached homes.
Is the applicant present? That's you, too? Okay. Ms. Bam, where's she at? Or you take it over?
Tyler McSwain, representing planning and zoning staff. Again, staff's recommendation for the planning was approval for ten conditions. And I'll read those conditions for the record. Condition number one. The maximum number of lots shall be sixty-three. Site layout shall reflect the submitted revised site plan dated on June twenty-second, twenty-twenty-one via email, and also include two community garden areas, including one proposed lots, eleven and twelve, a playground and pavilion areas. Condition number two. The applicant must comply with floodplain and stormwater management per the requirements of the Clayton County Water Authority prior to approval of an LDP and a site development application. Condition number three. All homes must have front facade constructed with forty percent brickstone or hard-coated stucco combination thereof, with the remaining facade consisting of hardy plank and other accents materials. Please note that the modification to this condition eliminated the overlay standard since this property is not within the panhandle overlay. Vinyls shall only be permitted to be used in the easel sockets. Condition number four. A plan book shall be submitted prior to the final plat application to the community development department that shall include, but not to limit to, building elevations, design criteria applicable for entries, porches, doors, windows, dormith columns, corners, rakes, garages, roofs, landscaping, fencing, retaining walls, exterior colors and materials. Condition number five. A homeowner association shall be established for the proposed development for the purpose of providing sustainable maintenance of common areas and covenants regulating sustainable uses and structures. Condition number six. Residential lots shall have the following minimum setback standards. Front yard, twenty feet, side, ten, with a total of twenty on each side, a total of twenty per side. Rear, twenty feet. All corner lots shall have thirty feet yard setbacks on both road frontages. Condition number seven. Each single-family home shall have a minimum of eighteen hundred square feet of heated floor areas with a minimum of two-car garages. Side entry garages will be used on corner lots where otherwise feasible based upon the required turn radius. Condition number eight. Access to the development shall be via one curb cut from Thomas Road. All street light and right-of-way improvements shall be subject to the approval of the transportation department. Condition number nine. An attractive landscape area shall be provided at the entrance of the development. Ten, the preliminary plat shall include the following development notes, which includes the language we previously discussed regarding ownership. No developer or builder shall develop or construct a new residential lot, house, in a subdivision for rental or lease purposed by developer, builder, or other any entity having business relationship with the developer or builder. Subdivision plat shall be annotated on the cover sheet stating, "No rental, lease, or lots, houses by," insert date, "with insertion of developer and builder's name in the blank line, and this annotation shall be one of the conditions of plat approval." Those are the ten conditions recommended.
All right, state your name and how many minutes you would like to reserve.
Danielle Blumenthal, Battle Law, One West Port Square, Decatur, Georgia. I'd like to leave two minutes, please.
Let me ask you, before you start, have you gotten with, had a chance you or Ms. Battle to speak with Commissioner Franklin about some of these conditions?
Yes, we absolutely have. We spoke with her the other day, and she requested, the only comment was that she requested two community gardens, and we were able to add that.
Was there anything more different, Ms. Bam, that she may have communicated with you?
No, I have not had any communications with Commissioner Franklin in regards to the conditions.
Proceed on, please.
Sorry?
Proceed on.
So the applicant here is seeking to rezon the subject property from AG to PUD for sixty-three single-family detached homes over twenty-one point-two acres, each to have a two-car garage amenities in this proposed development with a playground, pavilion, bocce ball court, and two community gardens. So the one community garden there, and then, as mentioned previously, between, at the north part of the projects, right towards the middle, right over there between lots eleven and twelve, will be a secondary community garden. So, yes, this is sixty-three lots off of Thomas Road. And, please, sorry, go to the elevation. So this is, again, going to be a craftsman-style product with two-car garages on each unit, a minimum size of eighteen hundred square feet. There will, again, there will be garages in all of them and the previously listed amenities, including the playground, pavilion, bocce ball, and the two community gardens. And then just to go over the changes and the conditions of what was arranged, just to highlight them again. As previously stated, we did speak with Commissioner Franklin, and we agreed to add the second community garden between lots eleven and twelve. Regarding condition thirteen, we request to strike the mention of the panhandle overlay in that we're no longer, we are not part of that overlay district. And then we just want to add to condition seven, the side entry garages to be used on corner lots where otherwise feasible, or, excuse me, or where otherwise feasible based on the required turn angle. So basically, wherever it's possible, there'll be a side entry garage. Yeah, so we ask that you accept, or that you approve this application. Thank you.
Anybody like to speak in favor of this request? Anyone like to speak in favor? Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am?
Good evening, commissioners, again. I do want to speak in favor.
State your name.
Oh, I'm Vanessa Battle. However, what I think is that as a county, we need a more solid type, because I'm in Roseville, and I understand how, as Commissioner Data said, oftentimes, and I work with investors as well, and they will come in and swoop these properties up, and when the properties don't sell, they become rentals. So, what I would like to see is the statements that we're reading, the legal side, it needs to be a little bit more tight because it shouldn't just be about buyers having relationship with the developers. One of the things I think that needs to happen also, and I'm not sure if this is a conflict because I'm not quite in politics, but perhaps the commissioners, or create a board that will also interview the companies that they want to bring in to be the, to be over these HOAs. And that's another way that we can kind of help our community be ensured that these rules and regulations are being followed. So, that's what I feel should happen is, is that the legal side, as far as these communities being turned into rentals, it needs to be a little bit more tight because as I'm looking at the language in it, it's not that solid.
Yeah, but it's also got to make sure that we don't legally infringe on people's citizens' rights as well as those of these owners.
Right, I agree. So, that's why we're saying sit down and make the adjustment, to just make it a little bit more tighter. And also so that the citizens, because I believe we do need new communities in our counties, we don't have a lot of new communities. And I'm all about seeing the growth and seeing homeownership, but at the same time, we want to make sure that the citizens are feeling happy and secure with what the decisions that are being made. Thank you.
All right. Anybody else like to speak in favor of? Anybody in favor? Anybody in opposition to come forward?
First time, Eugene, unincorporated Clayton. I think I'm just going to continue to oppose until, thank you so much for your suggestions because I guess the legal mind was saying what I'm trying to say. The citizens, the residents, once they buy in these developments, we then have very few rights. We have very few rights and we are being told that to establish our HOAs, we got to now serve papers to the declarant and all these different things because it's no longer a county issue, it's a civil matter, and there's a lot of responsibility put on the HOA, and we have no HOA. So, we need to sit down and we need to figure out what exactly are we asking of the developers? So, one thing, they come with, oh, you're going to have all these amenities. There's no timeline of when they have to do those amenities. So, you can live in your development for a year, two years, three years, four years, and still have green space and trees because no timeline has been developed. And if no timeline has been developed for the amenities, the declarant does not have to turn over the development to the residents to establish their own HOA. In the meantime, what's happening is that they're collecting HOA dues and they are using every penny to the drop to cut the grass and pay the taxes, and then the residents that live there become discouraged because they're like, well, what are we paying this money for? So, like she said, we don't have clear guidelines of what, how are the residents protected after you all approve the development and then they come in and then they buy it and then it's like you, you on your own. I'll do your favor, I'll make a phone call here and there. So, until we have some legal protections for the residents, I like nice, pretty, new things also, but we got to think about the residents when we're bringing this in. And I must say, I'm a little disturbed because it's like I see so many developments coming in, I have no idea where these people going to shop, where I'm going to shop. This is in my area. So, I'm going to be, I'm going to continue to come up here and be against until we sit down and come up with something that's better than what we have.
Okay, thank you. Again, the clock was reset and we're out of time for those in favor. Now, no, we're on opposition, right? All right, anybody else? Okay, two minutes.
Thank you. I think that the only comment that I kind of have in response to that is that the amenities are, you know, put in place by the developer to be an asset to the community. I think that's pretty clear that, you know, the applicant was willing to put in the additional community garden and to listen to Commissioner Franklin, make sure there's a playground and things like that. Those, you know, are meant to be an asset, they're not meant to be something that's like for, you know, four years, as was mentioned, anything like that. I mean, it would be along with the timeline while they're, while they're building, oh, while they're building the units.
All right, and just to reiterate one more time, the developer is in agreeance with all of the conditions?
Yes, all of the substitute conditions that were listed up there.
The ones that Ms. Man went over?
Yes.
Okay. All right, with that being said, I'm going to offer a motion to approve. Is there a second? Is there a second to approve?
Second.
Any questions?
I do have one. I'm looking here at my book and I have the maximum number of lots at sixty-one, and now I'm looking back and it's saying sixty-three.
Yes, the, the original onset of the application was for sixty-one. The applicant has since made adjustments and changes to the plan when they were creating the garden areas, and they created three additional lots. So, it's the request of the applicant to allow the sixty-three lots instead of the sixty-one that was, that was original.
Any other questions?
Can you state that again?
The, when the application originally came in, it was for sixty-one lots. The applicant has made revisions to the plan since its first origination. This latter version of the plan right now represents sixty-three lots that the applicant is requesting. So, the, the legal advertisement that went forward is for the full boundaries of the property and there's no increase in the outer boundaries just to the reference of the number of lots. The legal can opine on that or whatever the board's desire is in terms of addressing the number of units that they, that they think are appropriate. But again, the boundaries per, per the legal description, nothing changed there. The internals of the site plan has been moved around a little bit since its origination because there's been continual conversations in regards to the garages, the side entry, and the amenities area. So, this plan is not the very same one that came in.
Is this plan, I'm sorry, is this plan that Commissioner Franklin reviewed, that's sixty-three instead of sixty-one?
The, again, I have not had any direct conversations with Commissioner Franklin. The applicants have indicated that they have been in contact, so I defer to the.
Ma'am, can you, can you advise on that?
I do not remember the exact date that we spoke with her, but I do believe that it was the sixty-three units.
Chairman?
Mr. Commissioner Davis?
What does the legal notice say? Sixty-one or sixty-three?
The average, the legal advertisement said sixty-one and identified this particular parcel of land as being the parcel of land in question. So, again, I have legal opine on that.
Mr. Ray?
And can we, as a board, then forego the legal notice and say we're going to go ahead with sixty-three?
The legal notice for, for the land.
The conditions that you all just like to do anything else, you can make adjustments, strike, add conditions on any, on any application that comes before you all. The question is whether the sixty-three is what Commissioner saw and approved versus what sixty-one, which is what their application is. I mean, again, now, there's no, your board does not require the district commissioner to have to make the motion. You all can do that as a majority of your own, but it's just more of.
Yeah, but that Commissioner Davis's point, for me personally, if that was advertised and spoken or had conversation with Commissioner Warner at sixty-one, then I would probably amend my motion to reflect the sixty-one for approval if that is going to be acceptable. But we're still on, so are there any other questions?
Well, I have a.
Oh, sorry. Well, I was going to say, chairman, we as a board do, are supposed to heed to the that district commissioner's thought process in what they're doing.
Supposed to heed to it now, you just listen to the recommendation.
Correct. Well, yeah, you're right. I used the wrong word there, you're right. But with this being kind of an unknown here, I would almost say, or suggest, that we table this motion until Commissioner Franklin returns to get her, to begin to understand her knowledge of the situation, considering this is her district.
Well, and I respect each district commissioner's areas and do look for guidance from each commissioner as well, but one thing that I always want to be cognizant of is development in the county and the need for us to continue to push forward. I don't know why Commissioner Franklin is not here, but we have a duty as a board to continue to push things forward regardless of whether I'm here or each commission, district, district commissioner. So, I hear what you're saying, but I think we still have to conduct the business of the people at these meetings instead of keep pushing it off and pushing it off and again and again.
Um, is there open for?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I have a comment.
Commissioner Hamburg?
Well, because Commissioner Franklin has been talking with, I guess, staff and attorneys and all that, and in all due respect, I would like for us to wait and let her make a recommendation and then we either go along with it or we don't. But I think it should be the recommendation of that district commissioner.
So, my question to you would be, is the applicant willing to table it again for another thirty days?
I will say that we did send the updated conditions to Commissioner Franklin, if that makes any difference, but I guess if our only option is to table, then.
Well, you can have a vote on it tonight. I'm not saying it'll pass, but you can have a vote on it tonight.
I would prefer approval, but I would be willing to accept it if it's not, if they don't get approval for this. Sorry, would I, we would be willing to, to accept the tabling if it is not approved.
Don't worry, it does not work like that. That's what, that's what you, that was a good try, though. That was a good try, but no, ma'am, it doesn't work that, that way. So, if, if my motion was to approve, obviously you heard from the other two commissioners. So, I would amend my motion to ask for it to be tabled if you're in agreeance to it. We're not going to take a vote on it and then see which way it goes.
Um, yes, I would.
All right, well, I will amend my motion to table this till August seventeenth. Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye.
Question?
Oh, we've got a question.
Can we, because there's an accompanying, there's a companion with this.
We've got to take a, we've got to take a second.
And this will just be for decision only, since you had.
Yeah, this one here will be for decision only. It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Stand by.
The next item is item number twenty-four, which is preliminary plat, twenty-one zero three dash zero zero one eight, which is development of sixty-one single-family detached homes.
The applicant XL Properties Inc. on behalf of Philip H. Davis is requesting approval of a subdivision of land of twenty-one point two plus a minor acres of land located at nine one one zero Thomas Road, Jonesboro, Georgia. Parcel ID numbers identified on the agenda. The preliminary plat is for sixty-one single-family detached homes. The subject property is for rezon agriculture with a request for rezoning for PUD. Property is located south of Flint River Road and Thomas Road intersection. Staff recommendation is for approval with ten conditions and zoning advisor group recommendation is for approval with ten conditions. These conditions are the same conditions read on the related case, the, of the PUD.
Uh, yeah, Danielle Blumenthal, Battle Law, PC, One West Court Square, Decatur, Georgia. I don't have anything further to say on this matter, everything I said on the first one.
Okay, so, instead of having a public hearing on this at this time, if you're in agreeance to table it until August seventeenth, twenty-twenty-one, then I'll make a motion to table this, this request. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Next item is item number twenty-five, BOC twenty-one zero four dash zero one oh five, which is FLUP, amend GC to MDR to allow for one hundred and ninety-five single-family attached.
Case number, I'll sound in the description, please. That's case number BOC two one zero four dash zero one zero five. Applicant Battle Law, PC, on behalf of Jeanne Whittington is requesting a future land use map amendment from general commercial to medium-density residential to allow for a planned unit development, to allow for one hundred and ninety-five single-family attached town home units, town home units named the Genesis Town Homes. The subject property is located at eighteen sixteen Norris Ark Road and ninety-four ninety-seven Thornton Boulevard in Jonesboro, Georgia. The parcel ID numbers are identified on the agenda. The subject property is located near the Dixon Industrial and Norris Ark Road intersection and it consists of twenty-four point four acres of land. The zoning advisor group recommendation is for denial. The staff recommendations, the staff recommendations also for denial.
Ms. Blumenthal?
Danielle Blumenthal, Battle Law, PC, One O One West Court Square, Decatur, Georgia.
You're going to have nightmares about that air dress tonight.
Um, I would just like to say on this one, hopefully it'll, it should be a bit shorter for everyone, but we'd like to request a full cycle referral to continue to work with Commissioner Davis and the community to, to address some concerns.
Okay, so you're asking, well, let me back up. Commissioner Davis?
I have spoken with attorney Battle and she has called me and formally requested to table this motion, this and the companion case as well.
Okay, on this case, is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Let's, let's clarify the request for tabling, I think she might have said full cycle, but did you, in thirty days?
Thirty days.
Okay. Did you state the next meeting date in your motion?
No, I didn't. I, I, let's table this until, until what is the next day? Eight seventeen.
August seventeen.
Yes.
All right, the motion is to table until August seventeenth, twenty-twenty-one. Is there a second?
Second.
Probably move on second. Any questions? Here and now, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous.
Item number twenty-six, BOC twenty-one zero four dash zero one oh six, PUD to rezon GB to PUD for one hundred and ninety-five single-family attached town home units.
Item BOC two one zero four dash zero one oh six, the applicant Battle Law, PC, on behalf of Jeanne Whittington is requesting a rezon of twenty-four point four acres of land from general business district to planned unit development for one hundred and ninety-five single-family attached town home units. The subject property is located at eighteen sixteen Norris Ark Road and ninety-four ninety-seven Thornton Boulevard, Jonesboro, Georgia. Parcel ID numbers are identified on the agenda. The subject property is located near the Dixon Industrial and Norris Ark Road intersection. Staff recommendation is for denial. Zoning advisor group recommendation is for denial.
Yes, ma'am?
Danielle Blumenthal, Battle Law, One West Court Square, Decatur, Georgia. Just kind of mimic what I did last time and I'd like to ask for a thirty-day tabling of this matter to continue to work on concerns.
Commissioner Davis?
Again, we have spoken with Ms. Battle and I'd like to put forth the table until August seventeenth.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous. Thank you.
There's another one that goes with it, number twenty-seven, which is preliminary plat twenty-one oh four dash zero-zero-twenty, plat approval for one-hundred-and-ninety-five single-family attached town home units.
Again, for sounding of the record, agenda item number P plat two-one zero-four zero-zero-twenty. The applicant Battle Law PC on behalf of Jeanne Whittington is requesting to develop one-hundred-and-ninety-five single-family attached town home units on twenty-four point four acres of land. The subject property is located at eighteen-sixteen Norris Ark Road and ninety-four ninety-seven Thornton Boulevard, Jonesboro, Georgia. Parcel IDs identified on the agenda. Again, the subject property is located near the Dixon Industrial and Norris Ark Road intersection in the preliminary plat. This recommended for denial by staff, and the zoning advisory group also recommended denial.
Yes?
Danielle Blumenthal, Battle Law PC, one West Court Square, Decatur, Georgia. Um, and for the third time on this matter, I'd like to add, I would like to ask for a thirty-day deferral so we can continue to work with the community and Commissioner Davis.
Commissioner Davis?
Move that we table this request until August seventeenth.
Uh, second, the motion, any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is item number twenty-eight, BOC dash twenty-one zero-five dash zero-one-one-two CUP to allow special event facility in an existing office suites.
Agenda item number BOC two-one zero-five dash zero-one-one-two. The applicant, Kimberly Tate, on behalf of Harmonio Howell, is requesting a conditional use permit for a special event facility. The subject property is owned general business, and is located at one-forty-eighth Valley Hill Road, Riverdale, Georgia. The parcel ID number is identified on your agenda. This parcel consists of one-point-five-zero acres of land. Staff recommendation and zoning advisory group recommendation is for approval with four... I'm sorry, I bet, uh, you state, staff recommendation was for denial, the zoning advisory group recommendation was for approval with four added conditions. And these conditions read, the CUP is to be issued to Miss Harmonio Howell only. Any new owner for any event center at this location will need to reapply for conditional use permit. The event center shall not expand beyond suites E through L. Condition number three, comply with fire safety standards, subject to the requirements of the Clayton County Fire Marshal's Department. And condition number four, limit the hours from weekend hours of operations shall not exceed ten PM. Those are the four conditions recommended by our zoning advisory group.
All right, ma'am, please, state your name and how many minutes you would like to reserve in rebuttal, should you need?
Dr. Kimberly Tate, um, two minutes, please.
Okay, please put eight minutes on the, on the screen, and please...
I know, you can say eight, I'm gonna use two.
Oh, you only gonna use two, all right. Put two minutes on the screen then, all right.
Good evening, everyone, again, my name is Dr. Kimberly Tate. Resident of Clayton County since the age of seven, stay for the ten years spent away during educational training and practicing ministry. I've lived in, visited, and met people from many different places. I have an eye keen to what works in these other cities, what doesn't, what brings residents and businesses to these cities, and what deters people from ever returning. As a dental student in twenty-eighteen, I convinced my family to purchase this space here where one-forty-eight and one-five-four are located. One-five-four has been a successful and reputable childcare center for the last ten years. One-four-eight, we have since added in salon suites and office suites. And E and F, which are the very bottom, yes, is where we'd like to put this multipurpose event center. We're looking to bring a space that will add character and content to an area which we feel lacked it. This endeavor will do this by providing a contemporary space suitable to an array of events, but primarily geared towards coworking and professional development space. I've amassed a personal network of crews in nearly every field, from technology, finance, healthcare, entertainment, and beauty industries, that are ready to come in and empower the community with their skills and expertise through various workshops, seminars, and networking events. We're prepared to meet all conditions and follow all ordinances to stay compliant with all county expectations, and be able to provide this area with something that is sure to benefit all. I'm asking that you side with the zoning advisory group to approve this request for a conditional use permit.
Minute and a half, you practiced that. All right, is there anybody here who would like to speak in favor of applicant's request? Anybody like to speak in favor?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Garber?
Madam Court, Richard Garber, Incorporated, Drexford. Again, I would like to point out what the academics said about moving this county forward. And this lady, I've never met her, never seen her before, but she seems to be an entrepreneur, which they recommended that we need to help establish entrepreneurial businesses and move our whole society forward. With that being said, and hearing from the academics, I wish to speak in favor of this woman's application for her event center. Thank you very much.
Thank you, anybody else like to speak in favor of? Come forward. I gotta go.
As Tonya Bean Funnin, in incorporated Clayton County, I would also like to speak in favor of this entrepreneur. This is what we need for our county. She was, she's a product of the county, and now she's come back to invest in the county. And I'm gonna be selfish, I have two small children, and one day I want them to go away, get their education, and come back. So these are the types of things that we need to support for our community. Not to mention, this is the first business that we've had to vote on all night with all the residents, so we need some other things to generate income for our community, thank you.
Anybody else like to speak in favor of? Anybody like to speak in opposition to? Anybody in opposition? Would you like to utilize any of your, uh, yeah, you had eight minutes, you ought to be good. Mr. Commissioner, I'm sorry, it's been a long night. Commissioner Davis?
Yes, it has. First of all, Dr. Tate, thank you for coming back to Clayton County and trying to see us move forward. You know, a lot of folks believe that when we see the word "event center," we're thinking of parties, but it's glad to see that you're talking about business development and putting back in the county as far as workforce development, and I think that we should commend you on that. So we thank you for coming back. Chairman, I recommend approval of this motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other questions?
Oh, I'm sorry, with the four conditions as stated.
And then there seems to be, since the name is spelled different in the condition versus what is in the actual thing, we just need to make sure that the name is correct. And that might be appropriate to have that spelled out so that it's clear who the CUP is issued to.
Yes, Ms. Bam, spell out the name.
I'll have the applicant correct us, the, we've spelled, Ms. Harmonio Howell has been the recipient of the CUP, and Harmonio is spelled H-E-R-M-O-I-N-A.
It's correct as it is in that first paragraph, H-E-R-M-I-O-N-A.
Okay, thank you. There's a, so the, the, we'll correct the spelling to read, H-E-R-M-O-I-N-A. Right, so the spelling again is H-E-R-M-I-O-N-A. Harmonio Howell being the applicant and the recipient of the conditional use permit.
All right, just for the record, restate your motion.
For Ms. Howell?
From the top. She's already read her name, so just make the motion.
Make the motion to approve, what is B zero-zero-twenty-one zero-five zero-one-one-two, with the four conditions as stated.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any other questions or corrections? All right, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous.
Thank you, have a great evening.
You too.
The next item, item number twenty-nine, BOC twenty-one zero-five dash zero-one-one-seven, CUP to allow for warehousing, greenhouse, or light manufacturing.
Agenda item number BOC two-one zero-five dash zero-one-one-seven. The applicant Freedom Pharmacy Operations LLC on behalf of McDonald Ventures is requesting a conditional use permit for the development of a one-hundred-and-forty-thousand square foot warehousing facility, greenhouse, mineral extraction, and light manufacturing. The subject property consisting of nine-point-six acres of land is owned HI Heavy Industrial, and is located at four-five-five-zero Grant Road, Ellwood, Georgia. Parcel ID number identified on the agenda. The subject property is located near the intersection of Amble Block Road and Grant Road within the South Park Industrial Park. The applicant has submitted a letter agreeing to a table. Staff is entering into the record, a recommendation to table this request in order that the property can be posted according to the zoning procedures law, and the applicant has agreed to that tabling. The tabling, in order for us to accomplish the, the tabling, we will need to table it to the September cycle, so this would come back to the BOC in September. The, that'd be on, September to twenty, be the twenty-first would be the date.
And you said you do have a letter from the applicant?
Yes, I do have a letter from the applicant agreeing to that.
So with that being said, I'll offer a motion to table until September twenty-first, twenty-twenty-one. Uh, is there a second?
Second.
Probably move to second, any questions? Here and none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous. Madam clerk, was that the last one?
No, the next item is item number thirty, which is Resolution twenty-two-one dash one-fifty-five.
Good evening, again, Resolution twenty-two-one one fifty-five, which is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to abandon approximately one-point-eight-six-six acres of right-of-way for a portion of old Amble Block Road, to authorize the chairman to execute any documents related thereto and otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of the resolution, to provide an effective date of the resolution, and for other purposes. And before the board votes on this, there needs to be a public hearing.
Okay, so with that being said, this is a board-initiated application, so I will entertain anybody who is in favor of this request. Anybody like to come and speak in favor of this request? Anybody like to speak in opposition to? Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, well, come on, come on up, please, take the podium. This is in favor of, please.
Yeah, hi, Danielle Blumenthal with Battle Law, uh, one West Court Square, Decatur, Georgia. I'm representing the applicant here, and I would also, I would just like to ask the engineer who is here to speak to this.
Uh, Jack Johnson with Florsight Group, thirty-seven forty Da Vinci Court, Fisher Corners, Georgia. Thank you for allowing us to talk. Basically, I just want to give the reasoning here for why we made the request, and appreciate your time. It's a one-point-eight-six, one-point-eight-eight-six acres, as is listed on the agenda. The right, the portion of right-of-way to be abandoned is old Amble Block Road. It's just west of I six seventy-five off Amble Block, and you would take a left at the old Dunn Court before you get to the railroad track bridge, if you're familiar with that area. And Auto Nation owns the land that's all around it, and the roads that, of what will be abandoned are in very poor shape. Uh, it's, it's a portion of old Amble Block Road and Tanner's Church Road Connector. And like I mentioned, Auto Nation owns all the property around it. Uh, the roads are just in really bad shape, they're not really used. And this would allow Auto Nation to expand their facility, which is doing really well in that area. And it also eliminates the dangerous intersection at Tanner Church Road Connector. As you're coming over the bridge heading to I six seventy-five, there's been accidents there. It's, it's, it's a blind driveway. If you're, if you're at the intersection, trying to go across, take a left or take a right, people come flying over the bridge of the railroad tracks, and this would take away that, and you wouldn't be needed anymore. That's really it, other than I had a question about, something in the agenda about, it says to provide an effective date of the resolution. I assume that's when, if it is approved tonight, that would be the effective date, but I just wasn't sure about that.
Well, it's a good sign.
All right, yes, sir.
And, all right, thank you. Anybody else like to speak in favor of, go back there.
Mr. Chairman, am I allowed to ask questions on this issue?
It's only if you have a statement.
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? All right, again, anybody in opposition? Anybody in opposition? All right, here and none. At this time, I'll offer a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Probably move to second, those in favor, aye.
Question?
Oh, I'm sorry, let's go to question, question, Mr. Davis.
I'm voting on something honestly that I have never, ever seen. And I'm wondering why, for me, why we would just forego a county street or county property because a business wants to expand. I, I'm just looking for kind of a common sense answer here, or, or some logical means of why we just want to approve this.
Okay, first, it was in our, our budget, I mean, not budget, but, but our, our pack, packet. So it was outlined, that information was outlined to you then. Secondly, this piece of road is in very poor shape and, and disrepair, and is dealing with roadway. So, to abandon that, to allow somebody else come in and, and maintenance and take care of it would be to benefit to the county.
And there's a safety issue that was mentioned.
I heard that, yes.
Yes.
So, I, I guess, a follow-up question for me is, is there no other usage for this piece of, piece of land? In moving forward or, or trying to expand our, you know, our strategic initiatives in this, in this county? This is residing in District One?
And, uh, Mr. Reed sent out...
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Mr. Reed sent earlier out today a plat, a map showing exactly where it was located, and the, I think it was a picture attached to it as well.
Actually, if you, I left a hard copy on your...
Yes.
So if you look at the area, it shows old Amble Block Road, and then there's a marking, my, my color is black and white, but you can see like some pluses that go across up through Tanner, Tanner's Church Road Connector up through to the old Amble Block, that that's the portion we're talking about. So it's not, it's not like a, a, the whole part of this is all one-point-eight. It's not like a one-point-eight lot. This is just the whole portion. If you took this and measured it all the way across to this part, that's why it ends up being that much.
And it's roadway, correct?
And it's roadway, so there's not like a development you can put on there, it's just a road. The op, the op, the alternative would be if the county thought it was some value to it, because it's, it is contained all around around to maintain it. And, you know, Keith is here to speak to the, that engineering aspect of the alternatives if we decided not to.
Come on, Keith.
Good evening, Commissioners. Uh, to answer your question, the, the road is a remnant of the development of the interstate. So, it only serves as basically a glorified driveway as it sits right now. So, I mean, it is a liability for the county, and, and both legal and financial liability for us to, to maintain that. If these folks are wanting to take it, we, we would approve that, or... And go in favor of that.
Thank you. Any other questions?
That's it, sir.
Okay, thank you. Here and none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. It's unanimous.
That is the agenda.
That is the end. Do we need an executive session?
I checked my calendar, and although today is not December twenty-fifth, I do have a present for y'all. There is no executive session today.
All right. Hearing no need for executive session, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'll second. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. It's unanimous. Good night.